I'd like to call a meeting in order. Would you all stand and join us in prayer? Reverend Brian Herring will lead us in prayer.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we just pray today that you would give us wisdom and direction in this great city, Lord. Lord bless the men and women that are making the decisions in this council. And, Lord, we just pray that you would keep us as we keep our mind towards you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who called the roll?
Jason Briscoe, present. Joe Cockett. Dan Sherrill.
Present.
Johnny Savage.
Present.
Dan Roberts.
Present.
Rick Griffin.
Present.
Zena Taylor.
Present.
Wayne Conlon.
Present.
You have a call. Have the minutes from the last meeting in front of you?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presenting with the correction of Councilman Roberts' name spelling in it at this time.
I have a second. Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as printed with the correction of Councilman Roberts' name. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Normally, we waive department reports, but if any of the departments have anything they need to address or if you would like to address it, any department heads, council members, feel free. Anything pressing at this point?
I might just mention that because of the -- our council meetings now being the first Thursday of the month and the earlyness in the month, we won't always be able to have your packets that you usually get. So, starting this month, we're going to get you your packets before the committee meetings. So, you'll have them and then can discuss them and go over anything at the committee meetings.
Committee reports. Community Environment Services and Welfare.
No report, Mayor.
Fine.
I do have a request, Mr. Mayor. I would like for any of those on the council that have any suggestions as to how we might handle the present deficit in our general budget. It's something that concerns me and I know it does also you, and I'd like for all of us to be working toward somehow getting that resolved.
Internal Affairs.
No report, Mayor.
Public Safety.
No report.
Public Works Transportation. Resources and Policy.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
All right. We have an ordinances and resolutions, a business license ordinance. Myself and Jeff. Everyone. And Christine and Patrick have been discussing the business license and how much it takes to maintain and the fees we bring in from that and whether or not it is worth it. In order to process applications online, we had a gentleman last year put together a little program online that did not work real well, had some big issues with it. Have talked to some people about putting together a program that would work and keep track of business licenses and mile payment online, but it's $10,000, $12,000. I don't think we're collecting that in a year's time. And with the time involved to maintain the business licenses, originally, we thought that it might be a revenue generator. Mountain Home generates almost $200,000 a year with their business license. With the fees that we charge here, we don't generate that. And there needs to be probably some discussion on whether or not you want to keep it, as it's probably costing us money to maintain at this point, or do away with the business license, or increase a fee.
What are the figures?
Be roughly about $15,000 a year in revenues, what this year would probably be.
That was actually the first looking more around $11,000 or $12,000.
We budgeted $11,000 this year. Brought in $15,500 last year.
Yeah, because the renewal fees are less than the initial fees, so.
Mm-hmm.
We have all this information presented to this report committee and the business committee.
Yeah, yeah. We just kind of wanted to.
Bring it up and put it in your mind.
Yeah, let you start talking about it because it's something you need to decide here this month, probably.
What do they charge at Mountain Home?
They have a varying scale, and it's anywhere from $50 up to several hundred dollars, depending on the type of business it is. It's a -- they list all the different businesses, and depending on the type of business, it's a different fee for everybody. Some cities charge based on employees. We looked at that when we first initially looked at it. But for most cities, it's revenue generator. At the fees we charge, it's not, so.
Did we get what we thought we were going to get last year?
As far as number of businesses, I think so, yes.
You want to push that to committee?
Yeah.
A motion to push it to committee.
A motion.
Have a motion in a second to discuss the business license ordinance at the next committee meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Old business. Anybody have any old business we need to discuss today? New business, performance contracting. Wade?
We had our presentation at the previous committee meetings. I guess at this point, my question to the council is, are you interested in moving forward with at least the feasibility study portion? There's no cost or commitment from the city required to do that. And, you know, once the feasibility study is done, and we can bring the results back to the council and discuss it further at that point, I just don't want to ask somebody to work with me on the feasibility study if we have no real intention of moving forward.
Do you have a specific project in mind?
No, this is a -- this will be a citywide, wide scope look.
The largest energy user is a sewer plant.
It is, but we've got opportunities to save at all of our -- I kind of like to, especially at this point, do a broad overview of the entire city.
Is this something you want to do, Wade? You think?
It's something I'd like to at least go down the road a little bit. Like I said, there's no cost or commitment from us at this point. Get a little bit better information from the feasibility study and see if it is a good fit for us.
Will it entail a lot of work for your department?
Probably not a whole lot. It's more of a provide information to ESG. It'd be a little bit of work, but I don't think it'll be anything that would be too much of a burden.
Well, there's no commitment as far as that goes, but if you're willing to pursue it, I don't think we'd have a problem with it.
I think it'd be a good idea to see where we could save and schedule, you know, look at the most crucial and address things, you know, as they might be more beneficial to the city, based on what the feasibility study says. And then if it's something that we think is going to be worth the time and the effort on our part, you know, we could address it at that time.
How long do you think this takes, Wade?
I figure it'd take a couple of months before I have anything to bring back to you.
We don't need to vote on that, do we, man? We just need to give them our consensus, unless somebody's against it here.
Maple Street Lighting, City Curfew. Heather Cook.
I am Heather Cook, and I live on Maple Street. And last year, we had a bunch of our vehicles being, you know, gotten into and stuff stolen, and it's happened again this year. So, we have been attempting to set up a neighborhood watch because we're trying to figure out what we can do to prevent this without putting more strain on the city or the police department. So, one of the things that my husband and I came up with was more lighting on Maple Street. We have 10 street lights on our street, and the side streets that get less usage, they have 12 on most average in our neighborhood. We have a lot of pedestrians that are mostly teenagers late at night. My husband gets off work at 2:00 in the morning, and we have groups of teenagers. They're obviously teenagers. And if we had a city curfew, then that would be prevented. There's a lot of random shenanigans, I guess would be the best word, that happened that I don't believe adults would do. And it's just generally, it's not safe for the kids to be walking around. I mean, they could be taken. You see stuff like that all the time happening. But anyway, back to the lights. I was told that -- can I pass these? Okay. I've printed out where each street light is on our road in the distance between -- I was told between 150 and 300 feet is the typical placement for lights. There are some on there that are 600 feet apart. I've been sitting on my front porch at night and have all of our yard lights on, and I can't see people walking into my yard until they are in my yard, which happens more than I would like. And so, at least, I know it's not going to let the whole street, but at least if there were more frequent lights, they would have less dark. The people who are breaking into these cars would have less dark to stand in, and I can see people coming and approaching my yard before they get there, before they're in there. So, I just wanted to mention.
Okay, you're suggesting three street lights now?
Yes. We just took the ones that were the 600 feet apart and broke it down to at least bring it down to the back to the 300 range.
What are you asking on curfew?
What has been discussed between myself and my husband? I think an 11 o'clock on a weeknight curfew is fair. I mean, this is Harrison, other than Walmart, and coming home from your job, there's not much to be done on a weeknight for underage children. I mean, obviously, there would be exceptions as far as jobs, kids that have to help their parents go to and from different places, school events, dances, that kind of stuff.
I would like to add something to that. Mrs. Cook called me the weekend that she was talking about that neighborhood up there got hit pretty hard. There were like 12 burglaries that happened one night. With the kids walking around up there, her husband is seeing kids under 18 years old at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning up there in her neighborhood walking around. We also have had several complaints on the park after hours with the kids down there, causing some problems down there, and I really think you all need to look at a teen curfew. It'd be, you know, mine are out till 11:00, probably midnight on the weekends, and then there's all the exceptions. I've got some ordinances I've taken a look at. If you want to pursue it further, I'll get you some copies of them. And then there'll be a fine assessed if they're out there, and you can set penalties on how you want to do that as the council. And sooner or later, you can even find the parents. But I think that would give us a tool late at night when we find these kids, just absolutely stop, talk to them, call mom and dad, and find out why they're out in the middle of the night and taking home because they're not supposed to be out at night. And I think that that would help us, and I definitely think it would help their neighborhood, and I know it would help us down at the park.
Where do you live on Maple?
I live between.
What block?
I live between Prospect and Bauer Street.
I live right around the corner from you. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. It's -- there's really heavy foot traffic.
The car traffic up there's gotten pretty heavy, too.
Why would it be for the police officers to take these kids home? It looks to me like we'd want to inconvenience the parents and let them get out at 11:00 and come get their kids.
We do.
But they'd be a little more responsible for their kids.
We'd probably take them to the station and make mom and dad hear, along with the citation that they would give.
This may be a silly question, but do you handcuff them when you put them in the back of the car?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You know, at one time, I didn't think you were for this. You're going to throw out some more manpower and.
Well, what I really think will happen is, I think on the front end, and this is what I was telling you all before, I think on the front end of it, it's going to keep us a little bit busier, but once we get a handle on it, I think it'll slow our activity.
Yeah, it seems like it's.
But we are getting tons of complaints up at the park at night. There's apparently a lot of dope smoking and paroxysms going on at the park. We try to run everybody out, but you know the issues that involve around the park. I mean, there's several groups of people that are out there. Some parents like their kids there, then you've got the guys that like to go up there and night fish. And we talked about setting the hours for our parks, and that really kind of went over like a simple line. But the community, the last time we talked about this, seemed to be in favor of it. The only problem we had is what time we were going to set that they had to be at home. And, you know, I think 11 or in the way of midnights on the weekends would be.
Is this an escalating problem?
I think it is over the park. It seems to give us.
Well, we probably need to get a handle on it before it gets out of hand, then.
Conway has got one. Little Rock's got one. I've got the Little Rock ordinance here tonight. I stopped here tonight. The city that I used to work for has one, and I've got their copy of their ordinance. Some of the laws have changed on that, and we need to be pretty specific about how we write the ordinance up, but it is now tried and true in the way that we can go on that program.
Is vandalism on the playground equipment and stuff over at Park Creek?
Yes.
It's terrible. We've got three pieces tore up over there now. It's probably going to cost about $2,000 to $3,000 to get fixed.
Last week or the week before last, we were rebuilding some table tables.
You tear a painting case up.
Give a kid a brass monkey, they'll tear it up.
Wade, is there something you want to presume in your committee?
That's what I was going to recommend. Everybody got to move that my committee and also public safety get together and look at it.
Sewer and septic issue. You have something on that?
Well, if I think with that committee, we were left with what we wanted the notices that we were going to publish over three months in newspapers to read, and that -- and we were going to just leave the discussion on any type of fee or anything else going forward open until we saw what kind of response we were going to be getting passed out. This is the basically the same notice that you looked at a couple of weeks ago, less some of the language that you wanted left out. We have a process ready to go in place. We've had a couple of inquiries so far. There was a small notice put on the water bills that went out this month. And I think we're to the point now, we're just, we're going to see how many requests we get and see how long it takes to get through on them.
We did not get the insert put into the bills because we did not have any kind of wording or anything at the time that we had to send in. That's why we just got a little comment on the side of the bill. We've also got the form that you all had seen in committee meeting. We got that online as well. We have some downstairs, and I believe they have some in the public works office as well.
No, we're just, we're ready to, you know, we'll do the multiple publications over the next three months, take the requests as they come in, and see what we find out. I guess the only discussion left right now, as far as this process until we know more, is if the council wants to discuss any type of fee associated with it. Continue publication and notification without any discussion, without any thing saying what a fee might be. I don't know if we can go back and start charging that. So, I -- pretty well where we stand right now. The other issue going forward is we do need to address the ordinance before this is all done. We need to make sure the ordinance, right now, you're required to hook up sewer if you're within 300 feet and it's accessible. We've not been enforcing that, and I think that's part of what's gotten us into this position. I think we do need to address the ordinance, and we need to put something in there that helps prevent this in the future, whether that be if you're within 300 foot, you've got a year to hook up, and at that point, you'll be charged sewer regardless of whether you hooked up or not. Seems to be the most common way to address this. And the other options would be, I think it was discussed a little bit about penalizing people if they don't hook up. I don't know if that's necessarily the option to go. I think, I think just charging the sewer service, you know, if you have accessible sewer, you've got the choice to hook up or not, which you're going to be billed for either way, is probably the cleanest option available. With that, if you guys have any questions or.
Do you have a better feel for about how many people might be affected?
I don't, I don't think it's going to be as many as we feared. You know, it's been in the newspaper. We've got the little blurb on the water bill. This is terribly unknown right now, and we've had two requests coming as a result of this. I'm sure we'll get more, but I don't, I don't expect it to be hundreds, but I just don't really know.
Well, that's going to prove something to address those people that live outside the 300 feet, too, because there are several of those.
Yes.
Looks like they're going forward with, anyway, so.
We're going forward with as best we can right now, but I think probably the most important thing going forward right now until we get more information from the testing is starting to work on the ordinance so we don't have this same problem ten years from now.
Some of you might start the process within your next committee meeting. All right, we had floodgates. Did we get bids in?
Bids was effective today. We already started.
I think the only, having issue of having to vote on moving the money or.
I think, sure, sure. I thought that it was decided at the committee meetings. It wasn't really necessary since that was leftover money on the public.
So, reality.
That went to committee.
It was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. $4,700.
Do we have, all I have on new business. Anybody else have anything further on new business? Citizens comments? Rick?
I still got my voice, Jeff.
He set the timer.
I told Jeff if I lost my voice, I'd have cue cards made up. As most of you know, council meeting before last, I brought up the half-cent sales tax to go directly to the police department to not only sustain the resource officers, armed resource officers we have in schools now, but to add three or four more for schools that don't have them, and to get adequate marked police cars sitting out in front of these schools as a deterrent to replace the officers that were taken off the street in the '90s, I believe, and put into schools as resource, never were replaced. We get more resource officers in schools, they will have to be replaced. And this little juvenile problem we have going around town that we discussed here earlier, drugs are on the increase. I think this is a very important matter for our quality of life and for protection of our children in school. Nothing was brought up, everybody just.
Sorry, Rick. Excuse me.
Nobody brought this up. I had requested the council to get this on a ballot or at least discuss it. Nothing was brought up last meeting about it. Nothing was brought up this meeting about it. So, I'm not going to let this issue die because I really feel it's an important issue, and I would like to have a councilman speak up and get it on the agenda for next meeting. Will anybody do that? Nobody's interested in the safety of our children in school. Nobody's interested in helping the police department keep crime down here in town and protect our children more. Is sales tax that taboo? Mr. Yonis, can I, as a citizen, request it to get put on an agenda and be discussed?
Well, I'd recommend that you contact the finance chairman and maybe go through your ward representative and try to get some interest that way.
These two right here.
Typically, you start at, you know, at that point and see if you can generate interest with them, but.
Apparently, there is no interest because nobody wants to bring it up in here.
Well, I don't think it's that way, really.
Okay, explain it how it is.
I think we would probably address a sales tax at some point in time, but go along with me on this, Dan.
I'm ahead of you.
Yeah, you're, see there, we, we want to get all our ducks in order before we start talking about it.
Okay. So, the one-cent sales tax was brought up by the mayor last meeting, and nothing was discussed this meeting. Can we get that on the agenda because that will take care, I've been told that'll take care of what the police department needs from what I just discussed? Can we get the one-cent sales tax put on an agenda for discussion?
Not at this point right now. It will be on an agenda in the, I'd say probably not next month, but the following month.
Fair enough. Do you get that, Mr. White?
We're not going to leave those kids out in the cold, yeah, believe you me.
All right. It's down on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else have anything further to discuss? Any other comments? Entertaining motion adjourned?
Adjourned. Thank you.
All in favor?
Thanks.
It's amazing how many good things are going on in our area. That's why every week, Dennis King and Tabitha Odegaard reach out to make a connection with the movers and shakers in our community. From the latest fundraising drive to community event, Dennis and Tabitha share with you their conversation with those who are making our community an even better place to work, live, and play. Tune in for Connection to get connected with the movers and shakers in our community. Connection, another great reason why TKO8 is local television worth watching. Shopping local is important to the success of our economy, and shopping smart is even more important to your personal budget. And that's why every weekday, TKO8 Television takes you on a broadcast tour of some of our area's best places to shop. Consumer Advantage makes shopping local easy and fun as you learn more about the local businesses and service providers that are striving to give you the best and courteous and professional service right here at home. Consumer Advantage, another great reason why TKO8 is local television worth watching. The news never stops, and at TKO8 Television, we do our best to keep you informed on the stories that affect our community and lives. Every Monday through Friday, the TKO8 Daily Newscast brings you headlines and deeper looks at some of the things that you need to know. TKO8 Local News helps bring you the stories that the other folks seem to miss. Tune in daily at 6:30 and again at 10:00 p.m. to see what's happening in our area, region, and state. TKO8 Local News, another great reason why TKO8 is local television worth watching. Every week, TKO8 Television films the morning proceedings of Boone County Circuit Court to help you get a better understanding of how our judicial system works. The Honorable Judges John Putnam and Gordon Webb serve as the top legal authority in our area to bring fair and honest justice to our community in the 14th Judicial District. Tune in for In Court, weekday mornings at 9:00 a.m. and evenings at 7:00 p.m., Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, to see our judicial system in action. In Court, another great reason why TKO8 is local television worth watching. It's a busy world these days, and making time to watch your favorite local programming isn't always easy to schedule in. Simply put, it's an on-demand world, and that's why TKO8 Television makes all of our local news and information programs available 24 hours a day at TKO8.com. Visit TKO8.com and find us on Facebook for the local news and information you want when you want it. TKO8.com, another great reason why TKO8 is local television. TKO8.com, another great reason why TKO8 is local television worth watching and.